I'm Steve Potasik, Superintendent Jacksonville Public School District 117. Thank you for watching this presentation of our initial school reopening plan. This was recorded as a town hall meeting with the JSD 117 staff on July 7th. The staff was able to send in questions prior to the filming and able to chat in questions during the presentation. I want to highlight a few important items. First, this is our current plan and is subject to change at any time based upon changes in our guidance. I am editing this on July 9th, two days after filming. Just today, we received a major change in the guidelines from the IHSA regarding athletics. I still want to get our current plans out to you as soon as possible, and I will keep you updated as further changes occur. Please be patient as we adapt to this changing landscape. Second, our planning includes the importance of having access to the school for your students. We understand the burden that is placed on working parents when their sons and daughters have to stay at home. This is especially true for our younger students, and we also agree that the best educational environment for our students is when they're at school, interacting and working with our teachers. Thank you for watching. Welcome. Thank you very much for everybody who is attending today and who's watching this today. Thank you very much for the questions that I was sent in over the last week. This is being recorded, and there will be an edited version that will be released to the public later this week. First, the plan presented today is our current draft. This is going to have to be a living document. Our situation will be changing for multiple reasons through the month of July, through August, and even into the school year already. June 23rd, the guidance document came out for the very first time. June 30th was a major change when IDPH intervened and told ISBE that face shields would not be good enough to come back to school. So that had to alter our plans right away, and we're looking at every day as changes as they might possibly come in to see if we need to adapt this plan once again and make it a living document. Lawsuits. There have already been some lawsuits filed about this, and I anticipate several more are going to be happening over the next month. So we're going to have to follow those lawsuits, and who knows what we're going to have to do as courts come in and make different rulings. And then we have the potential for changes in our phasing. We all know numbers are going up throughout the country. Who knows what's going to happen, whether we're going back to phase three before the school year begins, or once schools open, do we go back to phase three then? It's always a possibility. I think our plan is flexible and will at least give us an answer if that happens. I get the inconsistencies that people are seeing between this plan and some other things, such as what the IHSA has brought out. I understand it's going to be very difficult for some people to accept that, and I'm having a problem grasping the two of these put together, that our choir students are going to be expected to sing in masks, our kindergarten students are expected to be in masks. If they go to PE, they have to be in masks, but they potentially can come to athletic practice afterwards and not be in masks. Now, I'm going to defend the ISBE for a minute because those rulings are from the IHSA through the IDPH and ISBE through the IDPH. And I do know that they are currently having conversations with the IDPH to try to get some clarity about how those things are not in conflict. But the reality is, we have to work within guidelines. I'm not, nor is the board, epidemiologists. We're not infectious disease specialists. There are a lot of doctors that aren't even specialists to deal with this. Now, I do know that we've got plenty of people who get online in social media and read a post or read a website and present themselves as experts on a regular basis. Neither the board or I have the luxury of doing that. We have to make decisions that we know protect the health and safety of our students and answer up to potential insurance claims. There's a lot of different reasons we have to follow guidance. In the discussions I've had with people in the central office, I've related it to my time when I was in the Navy as a nuclear power plant operator, and we would get trained how to run a nuclear power plant. Between all the submarines, aircraft carriers, and cruisers, there are tons of nuclear power plants operating in our oceans since the early 60s without any major incident. How? They regularly routinely told us that we need to, and this was words said from my superiors, CYA. CYA, for those of you who don't know, stands for cover your, I'll be nice, as Forrest Gump said, buttocks. Because what happens is that if the best way you can CYA is to follow guidelines and protocol and procedures, and if you do, and those protocol and procedures are made and developed to make the reactor safe, then those two things become parallel lanes that are both achieving the same outcome. Well, there is an aspect to what we are doing with our plans that is absolutely CYA, and we hope that the experts who are involved in developing the guidelines are taking care of the safety aspect, and we follow the guidelines, we take care of the legal aspect. I have a quote from our one insurance company. "We have confirmed with Safety National, who now is our liability carrier and work rent compensation carrier, they have no virus or COVID exclusions that apply to either line of coverage." What that means, in a liability case, likely, they're going to look at whether or not we were in compliance with state-county requirements. If we don't, we open up this district for substantial loss, and I and the board both have the duty to protect our community health-wise and financial-wise. So we have no options. Let's go further than that and talk about ISBE authority. The Illinois State Board of Education controls a substantial amount of our funding. They control our accreditation. They actually are the issuer of all the certifications and licenses for our professionals. We cannot go rogue and just do things our own way. And with that, I don't even know if this community could support a go rogue approach. On June 24th, I sent out my email letting everybody know the guidance document had come in, and we were working on a plan. Immediately, I got several emails back that highlight the absolute difference in opinion members of this community have. Right away, I got an email back that said, "Are plans still being discussed for options for adequate remote learning, as well as for students that can't realistically be in the classroom setting every day? A parent concerned with their student coming to school." Concerned email number two, "I did skim the outline, but did not see anything regarding children that would be in the high-risk category." Specifically, my child will be attending a school and is, has a medical condition which put him or her, I'm not going to give off anything that would go against confidentiality, but it will put their child in a high-risk category according to CDC. And they went on to talk about e-learning possibilities, remote learning possibilities, and I've gotten several emails saying we shouldn't go back to school at all. Counterred with, I received an email saying, concerning any limitations, this is ridiculous. Somebody needs to stand up to these idiots at the ISBE. You have a voice and start using it, Steve. If everything doesn't go back to normal until after November, I will start a petition to replace you. Obviously, our community is torn. So our board, myself, are not in a position to go against the guidance document the ISBE has given us. Given the turmoil, the divide, the apprehension, and the stress that uncertainty creates, we need leaders now more than ever. I had a superintendent's meeting, and I have a lot of them. I have a local regional office of education superintendent's meeting, LUDAS, Large Unit District Association, IASA, some law firms from across the state and across the country. So I'm not giving anybody away by talking about this meeting. Could have happened in any of those. But there was a group of superintendents who you could tell they were getting overwhelmed by what they felt was the pressure of the situation. And they started saying, "I don't know why anybody would want to be in our positions, want to be in our roles, want to be a superintendent at this time." And I absolutely jumped in and said, "I can't disagree with you more." Because right now is a time we're needed more than ever. Right now is a time that the country, our communities, needs leaders to step up and provide the positive adaptive leadership we need. I'm glad that I'm here in this time to really fulfill the reason I went into education, was to try to get, it was students, but now it can be communities, through rough times, and to have us better at the end. Now is the time that we need leaders. We have the opportunity now to know our purpose this year. Your community needs you now more than ever. We need you to provide the strength, adaptability, positivity, and leadership during this crisis for our community and our kids, and I know you guys will. But for the parents that are watching this when I make this live, we need you to partner with us and provide that same thing. There's a very good comment being made, shared on Facebook, a meme, saying, "If the rules and the guidelines for the school anger you, they make you mad, they tick you off, don't do it around your kids. Do it on your own, but when it comes to your kids, be the adult. Step up and talk about how they can adapt and overcome, given this situation." If we do that all as the adults, we're going to present the best situation for our kids to thrive, and it's a tough time right now. I'm not preaching here, I'm not allowed to do that, and these words, I think, go for anyone with any belief system they might have, or a non-belief system. "Grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." And that's going to be a theme through this entire plan today, and then with the questions that we have later. Must-follow guidelines. These are from the ISBE. These are pretty much the non-negotiables. "They require the use of appropriate personnel protective equipment, PPEs, primarily including face coverings." And that has been further defined to be masks. I know a lot of people don't like it. That's the ruling at this time. "We have to prohibit more than 50 individuals from gathering in one space. A bus is a space," and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. On with that, they did listen to superintendents when it came to busing. When they originally came out that we might only have 12 to 16 kids on a bus, we were adamant that we can't go back to school in many districts. There's no way we'd be able to provide the routes, get the kids to school. They listened to all that, and I think that made a difference in this guidance. So I do think they are listening to us. There is an exception on the next one. "Require social distancing to be observed as much as possible." Over and over and over again, if we have students in a room, it has been stated, and they cannot be six foot apart. Are we keeping them apart as much as possible? There's an aspect of exposure. Are they close to students? How many students are they near? How are they interacting with students? That as possible is a big theme throughout this plan and as we go into the next year. "Require that schools conduct symptom screenings and temperature checks, or require that individuals self-certify that they are free of symptoms before entering school buildings." That is our biggest question mark. The staff here will know that that's still the one that's on the board upstairs, the big question mark by it. In all of our meetings, there hasn't really been good guidance on how we would screen. The thought of having to take temperature checks on every student as they enter the high school is unrealistic, and we've been told that's not the expectation. This has been something they've changed in the guidance. Originally, it looked as if we were going to be able to have parents sign off a waiver for the entire year that they will daily check. Since then, that has been said, "No." And they've not, just today, we read another document that people asked weekly and monthly, and the answer was, "No." So we don't exactly know where that's going to come. So screenings, big question mark. We have to work that out. And then require an increase in school-wide cleaning and disinfecting, that kind of goes without saying. Let's talk about the PPEs for a minute. This will be quick. Face coverings are not optional indoors. We'll fully admit, a situation like I am right now, where everybody's probably 15 feet away, and it is absolutely mandatory, important that this is videotaped and you can understand me, I'm going to make the decision in this situation to not wear one. If you're in your classroom with no one else there, and you're recording yourself, I'm going to be okay with saying you don't have to wear one. But if you're directly interacting with people in a threat zone, an exposure zone, and you're in a school building, you have to be wearing a mask. It's not just around students. And that's challenging. That's difficult. They're going to have to answer this about how kindergarten, any students. We say kindergarten because it's the obvious one, but any of our students and our staff are going to wear them all day, given what we do for a living. We have many questions that require further clarification, and per the June 30 guidance document, face shields cannot be worn. How about those with medical notes stating the inability to wear masks? There are several issues that need further consideration and clarification. One, in that situation, can they wear a face shield instead of a mask? Right now, no. We're checking into if we can livestream all of our classes, can those students then be assigned e-learning? One, if it's not healthy, then they potentially shouldn't be there, especially if they're an individual with a breathing problem, given this virus. I think there's a very, I'm not trying to be a medical expert, but I think there's a very sound medical claim to justify having them stay at home. The other part is, from our end, the policing of which students wear masks and which students don't, given everything, it would put a definite burden on the school district to be able to do that. So that's an option we are looking at. "Prohibit more than 50 individuals from gathering in one space." Per the guidance document, each separate location has a 50-person maximum capacity. That is a classroom. That is a school bus. And this does not have the as-much-as-possible limitation. It is a firm rule. We're in discussions about if we were to drop the curtain in the JMS gym, for instance, is one side one space and the other side another space? We are looking in that as a possible option. "Require social distancing observed as much as possible." Classroom desks will have to be spread out as much as possible. We're going to promote social distancing by limiting the movement of students in the hallways. That decreases the exposure of students to other students. When students arrive to school, they will immediately go to their classrooms. We've already been in conversation with the bus garage about altering some bus schedules. Our most challenging aspect of this is the buses that have to drop off kids very early in the morning. Access to students in classrooms will be severely limited. At this point in time, we are not looking at any volunteers or guests. "require the schools conduct screenings." I don't want to go into this in too much more. At this point in time, we really don't know what to do about the screenings. That's our biggest question mark. "Increase school-wide cleaning and disinfecting." Went over that. That's probably good. "Schools and districts," and the quotes up here are from the actual ISBE guidance document, "schools and districts should also prepare for a return to remote instruction in the event of a resurgence of the virus." One of the advantages of going livestreaming in all of our classes, this is going to be very easy for us if this happens. And this is going to enable medically fragile students and staff to participate. It's going to create a safer environment by readily allowing all individuals demonstrating symptoms to stay home. It's a lot, I got a lot of questions in the questions about what are the guidelines or what are the rules about if a student is exhibiting symptoms. You're going to find out a lot of those, they haven't been defined yet, we don't know yet, but it really makes it a lot easier to say if you're at home with those symptoms, you can log on and you can have the e-learning experience. There are so many difficult situations, this e-learning situation answers for us, that it's really going to be a strength with our flexibility and adaptability as needed as we go into the school year. What constitutes an instructional day? Now, this, there are two things right here. There was questions about the difference, and I think some people already know, there's a difference between the elementary pre-K schedule and the high school JMS/JHS schedule. The instructional day is one of the limitations we needed to look at. You need to have at least five clock hours of instruction. Passing periods are removed. If you're working in your classroom before school with kids as they get off the bus, before class begins, that does not count towards the five clock hours. So this really puts a limitation. Just today, for you guys to know, there was a discussion about talking with the state whether there would be some flexibility on this, because what if we can only get four hours and 45 minutes? Well, one of the things we're doing is we're going to have some instructional stuff for the students in those schools that have shortened hours after they leave and go home. We can count that. Districts can be flexible in determining how to best meet the requirement in their own context by counting all learning activities towards the five clock hour expectation. It's called a blended learning, and that is an approach we're taking with this plan. Will we be able to grade? I know this is a big one for a lot of teachers. Yes. Yes. We have to have some sense of fairness and everything else, but yes. They understood that it had a negative adverse impact to students being involved and students learning by not having any student accountability. So they are absolutely, they've stated that almost to the point there's an expectation that we go back to some form of traditional assessment to have some increased accountability, which will then hopefully increase participation. So you will be able to grade. All right. Plan. Elementary and early years. Both will maintain the regular schedules. All right. Here's why we're able to do that. The five clock hours of instruction is something we need, but the other limitation is federal labor law on a duty-free lunch. Lunches are the absolute problem amongst all of our schools, how to get kids lunch. Remember the 50 student per space limitation? In the elementary school and early years, we're going to be hiring as needed more lunchroom monitors that are going to be able to come into the classrooms and sit with your students as you get your lunch. So that's how we're going to be able to have our staff at the elementary schools have their lunches. So students will be eating in their classrooms. I've had questions, are they going to be able to potentially go outside? There's a lot of those situations, we're going to be open to that, and we do think there's ways we're going to allow that as long as there may be a schedule, the central office, who is, understanding you can't go near the playgrounds because we have to wipe those clean if any kids on that. There are some of these limitations that are happening, but yes, there could be some possibility between that, PE, or one of your own instructional times to say it's a good day to get the kids outside and give them a break, because once again, if they go outside, the masks can come off also. There's some outside limitations, but I don't see any of our classes getting near breaking those beyond potentially things like playground equipment. As it currently stands, PE, art, music, media will push into the classrooms, allowing for teacher planning periods. Can potentially they go to those locations also? Yes, but we have to ensure we're having a safe method of them getting there and a safe method of cleaning and sanitizing those rooms in between classes, because once again, it's about exposure. If I'm exposed to the same 25 kids all day, that's a lot less exposure than being in a room that had 270 kids in it over the day. So that is our biggest concern there. We still need guidance on allowing classes to go outside or to PE. I talked, I spoke about that. And morning drop-off times for parents are going to be limited because there's no place to hold them other than going directly to classrooms. So we're working on bus and drop-off times to give us a much more narrow window. JMS and JHS. The reason JMS, and I've always asked this question several times, because some people had already heard that this was going to happen, JMS and JHS have a shorter schedule is that we could not come up with a way to effectively, safely, following the guidance, have all of the kids have lunch. And not only if the kids are in school for an extended period of time, do we want them to have lunch. Students having lunch is how we allowed our staffs to have lunch, their duty-free lunch hour. If our students can't go to lunch, we definitely don't have the staff to eat them, eat in their rooms. If the teachers sit with them, we're actually asking you to have a duty and work, and absolutely, a good share of our teachers might have said they're on board with that, but even one that says they're not, that's not even something local. That's federal labor law, and we're going to follow it. That's guidance. So therefore, we came up with a solution to shorten the day to the students being there with teachers watching them a maximum of five hours. And in doing so, the students can leave and pick up a lunch on the way to home, out to the buses. We're going to have a whole other system about JMS and JHS, they're telling us whether they're going to actually get a lunch or not. The teachers are going to then be able to go off for their lunch. Prep periods for many of the teachers would still occur during the day because they're going to be on the regular schedule, except we're removing PE from the regular schedule, and we're moving PE to a self-paced, self-instructed, monitoring opportunity for our kids after school or when they get home. We're looking at a log that they're going to log 15 to 20 minutes of activity every day, and we might do that with an expectation of them reading also. Then we can also add that time into that five-hour instructional time, which covers drop-off times in the morning for buses, class exchanges, et cetera. So that all fits within that window. To do so, we might have to move that five hours up or down a little bit to allow our buses to not have this mass group of students that have to drop off at JMS, for instance, early. And the bus department says that if we move those schedules, they're working on that right now, the start and end time of that five hours, then they're really going to be able to be more smooth and efficient with their transportation routes. This time, we've not determined how to deliver breakfast at either of those. Every effort will be made to have students move as little as possible, and our first, when I first put this up, was to have teachers rotate. If we can make a schedule where we have this group of students that are in class together five of the six hours, then if we have teachers rotate, they're never leaving the classroom, we decrease their exposure. However, we are now considering a traditional AB block. I say traditional because AB block was being used about the half-student attendance day, alternating student days. Not that. We're talking about the AB block that existed, my first year teaching Lyman High School in Florida, we did AB block. We had a six-hour day. I taught 135 on Monday and 246 on Tuesday. By only having five hours, there's some advantages to this. Now, disclaimer, I absolutely am against it on a regular year because having many of our students not have regular math reinforcement until every other day, data shows in many situations that's dropped tremendously, their math production. So, but this year's unique. By doing so, we'll have a two-hour block, which would allow some labs from some courses as needed. We're also having our students only have two hours of class exchange. And with the longer classes, we might also be able to stagger those also, which would allow our students then to rotate and potentially our teachers staying in their classrooms, which I think educationally overall is a better option. So we're going to consider that. Haven't figured that aspect of it out yet. We are examining some necessarily early bird and after-school options. AP Chemistry right now has mandatory labs, if you're going to take AP Chemistry. Now, college, they might change that because they changed some AP standards for last year, but as of right now, we might have to look at that. Driver's ed, health, there's some things in there we've got to look at. Do we have to provide some opportunities before and after school? We're also looking at the possible changes in the start and end time to allow for buses to go to, to drop off students and have them go directly to class. Questions. I grouped all your questions into two separate groups. One are questions I think I can give you a pretty good answer for right now, and the other ones are questions that they might have to wait. We did talk about grades. Speech therapists, are they going to be allowed to wear face shields? Everybody involved agrees that's so important for them to be able to do that with their job. Currently, they've said, "No." I would expect things like that to change before we go back to school. Barbie, have you heard anything else? Barbie's not heard anything, but they're going to have a tough time getting that one by all the law cases and lawsuits and everything else. I was asked a question, can we provide tours of school, of our schools for new families? And it goes beyond that. How about conferences, open house, all those other things we're doing? At this point in time, those are all canceled, and that was really clear even today on the document we got from ISBE. Cameras in classrooms. There are some questions I think I can answer, and some questions we don't have the answers for yet. One, student privacy. Thank you, everybody who brought this up. It's a very serious concern where a student is in a situation, they don't want where their location out known on the internet for other people from the past or for whatever reason. Understandable. We are looking at a situation like we have people do waivers for yearbooks or for newspapers, where we're asking everybody to waive that their students' image likeness information could be actually out on a livestream, and they're waiving and saying that's okay, and if they say no, we probably will be asking them then to stay at home and remote in, and go through the remote learning process. We have to look to see whether we can legally do that, but based upon the ruling so far that medically fragile students, they are saying they will support districts who are saying they can stay at home and e-learn. I think we're going to be able to have that done, and therefore, all the students in your class, we're hoping, will have that waiver, and we don't have to worry about student privacy. I've been asked about teacher comfort. I don't think there's teacher comfort this year. I can't find another way to solve this. So I know some people are uncomfortable with the thought of their lessons being output out on a livestream, but I can't come up with another way to solve this, and I have every confidence people will be able to, once they get doing with that and going with that, they'll find it fits right within their wheelhouse and they'll be fine. Training. We can have up to five days of e-learning days. That's a regular calendar days without the students to go over. That's a regular calendar days without the students to go over training. We definitely will be working on that as we get to the beginning of the school year on helping you with this process. Also, this is most likely not an interactive Google Hangout with the students. You're not going to have a screen with their pictures and their images up. It's going to be a live stream to them, one way. Now Kelly, what were you saying that they could potentially chat in with or type in with? Kelly's saying dojo or remind or something like that? If the students are sitting there, they potentially could type in a question. And that is really how this might look. We haven't defined that yet. But I've had two conversations in the last two days with teachers that said this. So I have my group of students and then this other group of students, and I have to respond to both. This is the one part both of those teachers kind of missed. If 10 of my students are e-learning, okay? Then if you normally had 20 to 25 kids in your class, some people more, some people less, let's say 25, that means there's only 15 sitting in your class. The other 10 are at home e-learning. You're still having those 25 kids that we have to react with, or the 20 kids, or 17, or yes, in some of our situations, the 27, 28. And I'm going to go on record right here, if you have that number that triggers the paraprofessional need, and even if a good share of them are e-learning, I'm going to argue and state we still need to honor the paraprofessional need because the extra time's going to be needed to respond to them at home. That's the first time that's come up in any conversation, but things like that we're definitely open to. Group work. A lot of people, how am I going to be able to do group work? You might have to alter your instructional style this year. That's the reality. That is just the reality that we're in. There's very likely going to be less objectives we can cover this year. There's almost no way that I see us, with the limitations we're going to have, being able to have the exact same instructional time, effective instructional time this year. Given the fact we have some students who've lost some important primary learning objectives from last year, I'm asking everybody this year to start analyzing their objectives and start thinking, what is it I don't have to cover? I've been stressing for years the importance of finding out those things you really need to cover and you really need to reinforce. This year provides us the exact opposite. Instead of talking about what are our primary objectives I have to reinforce, what are some of the learning objectives I just need to not cover? Telling you as a physics teacher, this year I would cover in two or three days, light and sound. There's three chapters. Because I really know mechanics is that much more important. If we got to a situation where students were coming every other day to school, my prediction was we're going to lose 30 or 30 to 40% of our effective instructional time with them. If we go to full-time e-learning, there's a possibility that's going to happen. What I'm asking is if you normally get to chapter 20, and we're saying we might lose 20 to 30% of our actual instructional time, the mentality isn't, well, I guess I can only get to chapter 16. The mentality is of the 20 chapters, what's the 20% I don't need to cover? So there's a lot of changes going to have to be done this year, both in what objectives we cover and in what instructional strategies we're using to reach those objectives. Can specials, art, music, PE, et cetera, go with kids outside? Outside was asked a lot. And I think I kind of covered that earlier, that we're going to look at options. We want, especially your young ones, to be able to get outside and run around as best as we can. I think everybody here agrees with that. You've got elementary people on this team that the minute we started talking about kids being in the classroom all day, I started getting, you know, it was the look of fear. We get that. We're going to work with that as much as possible. No to playgrounds. Playground equipment would have to be sanitized after every class left it, and we just are not going to be able to do that. How will students be able to be monitored and kept socially distant when they come to school at 7:15, but teachers aren't on duty till 7:30? Start and end times might be adjusted based upon what transportation says they can do with the bus. Contract hours, all that stuff absolutely is going to be honored. We'll maintain the contract, but we might have to start and adjust the start time and end time. I explained this, it was a question, what is the reasoning for allowing JMS and JHS to go only half-days? I went through that earlier. Will the other half-day for JMS and JHS be online? No. One, we're going to do the PE and reading as their instructional stuff when they leave us, but two, that's just really not physically possible, given the fact that we have our kids driving home on buses, so we really don't have the infrastructure to have them go home and then be there at a secured time. So that's not possible. What if you have just tables in your room and not desks? Can I still just have two kids at a table? The answer to that with ISB and the webinars we've been in is yes. Six-foot apart if possible, other than that, as far apart as possible. We're not expected to tear down walls and rebuild classrooms. We're not expected to buy all new desks. Everything else, it's as possible. Will there be enough masks provided in case students have to be given more than one per day? Masks have become a staple, a part of our community. We are going to have some backup masks on hand for broken emergencies, but our approach also has got to be very similar to other things it's expected you bring to school. Right now, it's expected in society you have a mask. You know, it's also expected you have pants, and we don't buy those for you. Unless you have such financial need that our foundation could work with you on some of that stuff. So yes, there are situations with people in severe financial need. I know the foundation will help us out. But we are not going to approach this as if it's the school's responsibility to provide masks. There are tons of things you are expected to bring to work every day, to school every day, and the mask will be one of them. Will each building have an area to quarantine students that show symptoms of illness? Yes, we're working on that. That is an expectation that we can keep them away from other kids until parents can pick them up or something else. So that can be tough in some of our buildings, very tough. So we might have to rearrange some offices. Okay, those are the ones I think I can give answers to. These, I can go through a lot more quickly because I can group them also. Here's some things we don't know. How to get work to kids that e-learn? Yes, there will be an expectation that we will. We'll have to develop a system on how to do that. It might be parents come picking them up, it might be some digital in some classrooms, we don't know. If we go at home, phase three, can staff work in the school? I would like that to happen because I think it will be beneficial to have you livestream from your class with your equipment. Also, I can tell you, both myself and my wife, an educator, she was going into school to do her online stuff where she taught, because the separation between home and work together at the same place, that was burdensome. And I think we all kind of agreed, that was very difficult. So yes, if we are allowed, we absolutely will open up the opportunity for you to come back into the school individually and livestream from your room. I think it'll be beneficial, but I can't answer that yet because I don't know what the guidelines are. Cameras in classrooms, more. Substitutes, we'll have to figure out how they'll be able to use that when a substitute is in there. Quarantine use of sick days, other questions. I got a whole litany of this, about how we'll respond to if there's a COVID case in our class, about quarantining, about symptoms, everything else. I'm not an infectious disease doctor, nobody on the board is, we can't answer those. And I can tell you right now, at every superintendent's meeting, that's a question, everybody, someone asks and everybody goes, we have no clue. We know that we will get further guidance about that before the school year begins. So I can't answer any of those questions about how we're going to respond to the disease if it has an event associated with the school. No idea how to respond to any of those questions right now, other than we will follow guidance. Now with that, there's a perception that if you have one kid in your class who gets to test positive, immediately the whole rest of the class has to go home for 14 days or whatever. Was my thought too, until a couple of weeks ago, I was speaking with a medical expert, a medical professional, who said, but that's not the standard at hospitals. Because think about it, if you were around somebody with COVID and you had to go home for 14 days, our hospital would be closed because all the workers have been around somebody. It's one of the reasons I'm predicting they're so strong at the IDPH about having masks at school, is that from what I was told, once again, I'm not an expert, could be really wrong about this, that if we can prove everyone had their masks on around them, we're greatly increasing the chance of there not being a mandated quarantine at home. So I think that's one reason why they're pushing the masks so hard, is because they're hoping that that helps protect people and therefore they don't have to jump to closing classrooms or whole schools down. But we don't know yet. When talking about kids in their respective classrooms during the entire day, what happens with special ed teachers? Are they going to push into classrooms or not? That's going to be individually based on each student, about the student's IEP, and we're going to try to have as lowest number of changes as possible. Would you agree with that, Barbie? Barbie says, right on, I got it. That's the legal response to special ed and the right educational response to special ed. There's an emphasis in the guidance document to take care of special ed students. So we're going to have to put extra consideration on how are we providing those items necessary that they are required to give them in their IEP, the supports necessary. So that will be a top priority. Would the video recordings be available in livestream only, or will families be able to access it at their convenience? As it stands right now, the expectation will be that those kids will be logging into your class during your class time. That's the expectation. I don't know if we're going to record. People bring up, well, we can record those and then post them on the internet. That was brought up in a superintendent's meeting today. I don't know if any of you are involved with taking recorded video and editing it and posting it. It takes a lot of time. How to house it, where to access it, there are so many tech problems with that. Livestreaming in the moment is absolutely the easiest option with that. And there's an expectation, parents that their kids are signing in and being there for school. A lot of questions in RED that are all about COVID and our responses, and I don't know how to answer those right now. Will center-type activities be allowed? Manipulatives, rotating through activities? Very limited because you have to clean after each one of those. We even spoke about during the lunch hour, Barbie brought up an idea of them having their own, what did you call it? A task box, an activity box, where the kid could bring their own Play-Doh or their own stuff to work with on their own, lock it up, keep it to themselves, put it in their desk. We're probably going to have to start looking at more things like that. As a physics teacher, many of the labs, many of the chemistry labs, might not be as possible this year without severe commitment to cleaning afterwards in between each lab hour. It would be tasking. How do we maintain six-feet distance between students and teachers while also effectively teaching? As possible. Do I think it's very necessary for you at times to get close to students to work with them? Yes. So if it's necessary for the education at that point in time, yes. I don't want to relate that to, well, then I could do everything the exact same because instructional strategy-wise, there's some other strategies to teach some objectives. But we know that working with students is absolutely important. Are parents going to be given the option to not send their children since we will be livestreaming? We're looking at that, yes. The reason I kept that question in there is because I wanted to remember, we're not looking at that being a daily thing. I guess if a kid is sick and calls in sick, they might have the access. But minimal maybe a quarter, because it would be too tasking on my staff to understand who's in here now, who's livestreaming. So maybe even a semester or a quarter as an option to go e-learning. How are bathrooms going to be used? Going to have to work that out within the buildings. Will students be able to share lockers? A lot of these questions are going to just have to be worked out within the buildings. Will assessments be done online versus turning in paper assessments? That is a tough one, that people have to sit back, and I don't think there's one size fits all. I think it's going to be different for everybody at this time. I grouped all the questions together. If I missed another big one, let me know. Are there any questions coming in on the chat? Could students use gloves of manipulatives to help with cleanliness? I would defer that to a good question. Let's ask our Department of Public Health and other individuals. Once again, I'm not going to sit there and say that I know gloves will create that to be safe, but could that be a potential option? Maybe. If we're thinking that a kindergarten student's not then going to take those gloves and rub his eyes and rub his mouth, then there's a question, we're not being as safe as realistically possible. Special education domain IEP meetings. Personal or in the building? They're going to be scheduled remotely as much as possible. If parent permissions are needed to be signed, of course, then we would have to be in person, more than likely be in person. But we'll still try to limit it within as much as possible with that. Oh, there's a lot of them that we just don't have the answers to right now. So if we're not answering it, it's just Mike and Barbie are looking through to see what are the ones we think we could give some answer right now, other than, and many of them, we'll note and say thank you very much. There's probably some we hadn't even thought about yet, that we'll try to get some answers in the near future. So many of the questions that we're saying we can't answer right now, thank you for asking, because we've put them on a board to say, it's got to be part of our planning. You, I, all the people here, all of us, we got into education to make a difference. Our kids need us and our community needs us now more than ever. This is not going to be easy, at all. You're going to have to analyze everything you've done for years and look at it through two different lenses. One, given that we will lose effective instructional time this year, is, when you're doing an objective, is this an objective that must be taught? And two, given our limitations, do I need to adapt my instruction on this objective? Adaptability is the word for the year. I know that I work with an amazing, adaptable, strong staff. This community has been raving about this staff, non-stop. People just rave about what this staff has done for them, about how much time and commitment they've gotten from our teachers when they need help.